Canyon City Planning Commission, Wednesday, June 23, 2021. Now call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi Denise, will you please call Rol.
Hello, certainly. Good evening, everyone. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Commissioner Suther?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Okay, so we're good there. Item two, no special presentations. Item number three, I now ask for approval of minutes from the May 26 regular meeting and June 8, 2021, special meeting. Can I have a motion and a second, please? Or actually, are there any corrections? Nope. So I now call for a motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that, sir.
Thank you. Please call Rol Denise.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 4A, special review use, multifamily residential at 508 and 510 Greenwood Avenue. Case number SRU 2021-004. Applicants are Chris McIntyre and Thomas Rowe. Owners, location is Greenwood Avenue, approximately 135 feet east of the intersection of Greenwood Avenue and Fifth Street. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Patrick, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. I apologize for not being with you this evening. I was sent home by order of the HR Director. I came down with something yesterday and they said when I came into work this morning, I didn't look like I'd recovered, so I was told, "You can go home, work on whatever you need to do and zoom into the meeting tonight." So that's what I'm doing. Anyway, allow me to share my screen with you all. Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this evening, we are here to consider a request for special review use approval to allow multifamily residential as the principal use of a property in the CB, Central Business District Commercial Zone. The subject property is located 508 and 510 Greenwood Avenue, and this is a public hearing. Subject property is located mid-block on Greenwood Avenue, approximately 135 feet west of the intersection of Greenwood Avenue and North Fifth Street. It was platted with the original incorporation of the city. It contains a duplex structure which appears to date from 1927 and an accessory structure whose construction dates from the 1950s. Although it has previously been used for residential purposes, whatever legal nonconforming status it had for that use went away when it became the office and clinic for the Pregnancy Center of Fremont County. The property is approximately 5,826 square feet, which is well in excess of the minimum lot size for lots within the CB Zone District, and that is 5,280 square feet. Site is also very convenient walking distance from the Fremont County Offices, Fremont Center for the Arts, Macon Plaza, and the Canyon City Library. In the CB Central Business District Zone, multifamily residential as the principal use of the property is a special review use. The intent behind this provision was primarily to limit ground floor residential uses, particularly along the Main Street core. The subject property is two blocks off Main Street in a neighborhood with other residential uses of property, including on the ground floor. The applicant is proposing to create three dwelling units onsite. Each dwelling unit will have two bedrooms. It should be noted that within the CB Central Business Zone District, parking requirements have been waived by municipal code. However, staff did ask the applicant to consider providing off-street parking onsite. They prepared an illustrative layout demonstrating how they can fit six parking spaces onsite and six parking spaces is what the code would require for three two-bedroom apartment units. As defined in Section 1724-030B, special review uses are evaluated against six criteria, including size and location, traffic generation of parking, and buffering to potential to create nuisance conditions upon neighbors. Staff has evaluated this request to allow multifamily residential as a principal use in the CB Central Business District zoning against those six criteria and found that the proposed use will be harmonious with the scale and character of this particular neighborhood and will not create land use conflicts for surrounding properties. Staff therefore recommends that Planning Commission cite the four findings of fact as listed on the staff report as evidence of the city's jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on this matter. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the proposed special review use for multifamily residential at 508 and 510 Greenwood Avenue. That would conclude the staff presentation. I see we have Chris McIntyre joining us via Zoom as well. He can answer any questions you may have as well as myself.
Thanks, Patrick. Is there any questions from the commission for planning? For Patrick? No questions? Mr. McIntyre, do you want to chime in and let us know a little bit about the project?
Thanks for letting me also be on here via Zoom. We had a death in the family and had to travel to Nebraska, so we're en route back and it was nice to not have to be back in time for the actual meeting. So thanks. I currently have 10 rental properties in Canyon City and I bet weekly I get phone calls, emails, text messages from people saying, "Hey, we're in need of a place to stay. Have you got anything open?" And unfortunately, I never do. I live just down the street and this place came up. I was a fan of the Pregnancy Center and thought that would be great to get them moved to their new location and it had the potential, I thought, to make three residences for tenants. We purchased it and then realized that it was going to require some rezoning or a change in the existing central business layout, and so we immediately applied for that. I have begun doing some renovation in terms of some demolition of drywall and exposing studs and have been told that that requires a permit, so I've stopped and now I'm in process of getting that permit dealt with. But I would like to get three two-bedroom properties located there. I live half a block away and I want to see the area that I live in have a good street view and curb appeal and I've already done some yard work to the front and plan to keep it up and put neighbors in that will fit well into my neighborhood, so.
Okay, thank you. We have a question for you.
Hey, Chris. It's Randy Smith here. I have a couple of questions, maybe just one question or more or less statement. You said you were starting to do a little bit of renovation on your own. Obviously, we need a building permit, that's fine, but it raised a question which was also in the documentation that there could, may be, possibility of asbestos and there might be some testing that needed to be done. Would that set you back at all or how much does asbestos testing cost? Do you know anything about this and how would that affect you?
I was made aware that I needed a permit and asbestos test, so I went ahead and called a company that does testing. First Choice Environmental, I think out of Pueblo. They came down a week and a half ago and tested and found that the old texture in the drywall upstairs contained a 2% asbestos content, which is not terrible, but it's an amount of asbestos. So I then contracted with Cyclone Cleaning in Pueblo West and they are going to come down and remediate, or abate, I should say, this weekend, starting this Saturday, I believe. All of those things were not expected, but we're gonna make it right so that we can continue on with our plan. So, did it set us back? Sure, it set us back a month or so, but we will start right back up in another few weeks with proper permits and everything.
Proper permits, yes. Have you ever, being that the building is built in 1927, and this is just a far-fetched idea, but of course, we had lead paint problems many, many years ago, just a century ago, whatever. Is there a possibility of any kind of lead paint? I mean, we're looking at asbestos, might as well look at other safety features or any kind of other problems that you might come in contact with. Is there any concern with that or are the buildings pretty sound as far as they go, as far as the water systems and electricity and everything else? But I know you're gonna gut it and you're gonna renovate it and you're gonna make it look nice, so I was just asking some of these safety questions.
Along with the lead paint, it wasn't tested for because it's not a requirement. Likely, the paint that was removed probably did contain some lead. The protocol for cleaning up both those spills, if you will, the asbestos and the lead dusts are the same, and so they apparently have to clean it to a white glove standard so that there is no dust left. And then everything that has not been disturbed in there will not be disturbed and simply will be painted over, locking in the asbestos in if there's any lead. So we are aware of that as well. I imagine 1974 was when they swapped it over, the lead paint regulations, so there probably is some trim in there with some lead in it, but it won't be disturbed or it will be cleaned up in the same way.
I have one more simple question. Is there a crawl space or do you have a basement in this house?
Yes to both of those. About two-thirds of the footprint of the main property has a basement below and then about a third of it has a crawl space. And the crawl space is sealed off and the basement will be likely just kind of a secondary hangout space.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant from the commission? Yes, sir.
Chris, the back building by the alley, is there, there's a lot of work to be done? What is that being used for right now?
Patrick stated that it was built in 1950 and I think that that's not correct, but I think it was, 1950 was the effective age of the main house. Looking at the permits, it was in 2008 that the garage was built, I think, and the garage, well, it's not really a garage, it's a storage accessory dwelling with a garage door that can't actually be accessed. The Pregnancy Center used it for their store, that was where they housed all the baby clothes and everything. It is fully drywalled, fully insulated, and has heat already in there. There should be the need of putting water and gas utilities out there and then erecting some walls and adding a kitchen space. So significant, maybe, but as far as disturbing anything, it really will fit right inside of the 900 square foot accessory dwelling.
Thank you.
Chris, this is DeeDee Clement. I just wanted to just say thank you for what you're doing and renovating this property into affordable housing and making three new places for families to rent, so just thank you for thinking creatively and being part of the solution here in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the call that would have a question, and are there any further comments from the commission? So at this time, I will close this public hearing. And we need a motion and a second, please, based on the findings of fact. And there's four of them listed out there that Patrick has already discussed with us.
I can make that motion. I move the Planning Commission adopt the four findings of facts regarding the proposed special review use to allow multifamily residential at 508 and 510 Greenwood Avenue.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Denise, please call Rol.
Certainly. Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Okay. I now need a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council, please.
I can make that motion. I move the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the special review use to establish multifamily residential at 508 and 510 Greenwood Avenue.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Denise, please call Rol.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Okay. Well, thank you, Chris. As we all know, it's much-needed improvements to the neighborhood there, and I also live in the few blocks down the street, so I'm glad you're taking this on. Thank you. All right. Item 4B, Draft Unified Development Code, UDC. Applicant is the City of Canyon City. The location is affects land use and development citywide. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Patrick, can we have a staff report, please?
Well, so I'm going to briefly hand this off to John House deal from House deal Levine, but I just wanted to point out that tonight has been about a year in the making. We began the process of updating our land use code in conjunction with updating the comprehensive plan. This has involved a number of meetings between Planning Commission and Council to go over various portions of the new land use code. We have also asked to include Title 16, which happens to be annexation provisions, and Title 18, which happens to be vesting of land use property rights, all into what will be the new Title 17, what we are calling our Unified Land Use Code. And there are a number of changes that are happening in terms of making it more user-friendly, making it more comprehensible, including graphics and charts, so that, you know, pictures worth a thousand words, the layperson is more easily able to understand it. And we're also trying to make it, we're also trying to simplify the process in a number of areas as well. So with that, as kind of an overview, let me hand over to John House deal, who I believe has a PowerPoint for this evening as well.
All right. Good to see everybody again. I saw some of you just two days ago in person, so I liked being out there a lot and I wish I could have been out there tonight. So what I'm going to go through, I know you've worked over the last year most consistently and diligently with Jackie Wells on our team. I provided oversight for both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. The project manager for the comprehensive plan was Josh Coons, and really, the project manager for the Unified Development Code was Jackie Wells. But I worked with both of them throughout, so Jackie is not available, she's on vacation this week, so you have to suffer through a presentation by me. So as I go through this and during Q and A, I'll go through a very brief presentation just to get it on the record. It's designed to be very brief, provide an overview. And then I think collectively, Patrick, who worked very closely with Jackie throughout this as well in our team, between Patrick and myself, we ought to be able to get to any Q and A you might have. So with that, I'm going to try to share my screen and we'll see if this actually works. So can you guys see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this is a brief presentation for the Unified Development Code as Patrick has indicated. Again, we have worked on this in tandem with the comprehensive plan. Picture Canyon City 2040 over the last year. Truly make sure that these are companion documents and that the new Unified Development Code really serves as an implementation vehicle, a tool, that is dovetailed and aligned specifically with your new comprehensive plan to begin to deliver on some of the city's goals and objectives around land use, development, and investment. So first, I'm just going to provide a quick project overview. Again, the due, the plan and the zoning ordinance were developed in tandem over the course of the last year, and along the way, several meetings were conducted jointly with the Plan Commission and City Council. So everything in here is a direct result of the contribution, not only of staff and the consultant team, but of City Council and Plan Commission along the way, as well as members of the resident and business communities of Canyon City. So the scope of work for the comprehensive plan, I won't go through all these steps one through seven, and I'm sure all of you are aware, it was a tremendous day two days ago when the comprehensive plan was enthusiastically and unanimously adopted by City Councils. That was a great day. So here we are, two days later, and we're presenting the development regulations, which were really done in steps eight and nine, but necessarily, this nine-step process for the plan and the zoning was not necessarily incremental or sequential. We did a lot of the zoning components in eight and nine as we went through steps one through seven to develop the plan. We wanted to make sure that at the same time we were discussing existing conditions, as we were formulating goals and objectives and different land use considerations, that as those were being developed in steps four, five, and six of the planning process, we were at the same time presenting ideas for zoning and regulations and discussing those alongside with planning to make sure the two documents, again, really supported one another. So what's been done so far in October 14th was a diagnostic presentation to the Plan Commission and City Council. Diagnostic report, again, the first thing we do is we do a deep dive into your existing regulations and we sort of lay out for the whole world to see the good, the bad, the ugly, what's working, what's not, what's missing, what you might have that you don't need, and to bring sort of a spotlight on a real good examination comprehensively of your ordinance. That was done in October. In December, we framed out a preliminary recommendations presentation that based off of community input and workshops and key one-on-one interviews, together with our diagnostic report and meetings with Plan Commission and City Council, sort of what our framework for recommendations was. In March, we then delivered drafts, chapters one through five. We sort of delivered this in pieces because zoning is a lot to get your arms around, and we wanted to deliver it in pieces so we could really discuss it and have consensus before we moved on to the next group of chapters. So in March, we did chapters one through five. In May, we did chapters six through 12. And then June 2nd, we did another shot at chapter six through 12 because that was a pretty meaty section and it required really getting into two different meetings to get through those six chapters. But that's sort of the sequence of meetings and deliverables. The key themes for the outreach, again, we did workshops and we did one-on-one interviews with different individuals that had sort of insight into the code, developers, builders, residents, business owners. And these are some of the key themes. Again, there's a detailed summary of what we heard from residents and business owners. This is just a real high-level overview for the presentation. So we wanted to make it easier to use, there was a lot of terminology, sort of legalese, things that maybe a small roomful of attorneys could battle for a week and figure out what it was supposed to say. We looked at those and tried to reword those. We wanted to include more graphics and diagrams so that it was more intuitive for someone to use. No offense to any attorney who may be participating in this meeting or watching the call, you shouldn't have to have an attorney necessary to interpret a zoning ordinance. It should be pretty clear. And then we wanted to reorganize the document because just the structure of your previous ordinance wasn't the way it should be. You had some definitions in the standards section, you had some standards in the definition section, you have different things that weren't organized, again, intuitively to use the code as a reference document. We then looked at development standards and regulations. There's a lot of inflexibility built into the subdivision requirements that was increasing the cost of development unnecessarily. There was a lack of variety options for stormwater management for new development, and your parking standards were excessive. Way too much parking was required and it didn't really align with contemporary standards based on use practices now for land use and development, so we took a look at your parking. For district-specific requirements, we looked at inconsistencies between the city and the county, where there was sort of a little butting of the heads. We looked at the regulations for residential districts around the downtown. Some of them were written in a manner that was preventing or at least prohibiting investment in properties because of the way the regulations were written. And then there weren't enough commercial districts to really sort of get at the different scales or character or nuances of the types of commercial uses you want in different places. Your downtown is a district that's different from your major highway corridor district, which is different from some of your neighborhood commercial districts. So one commercial district for these different applications wasn't really correct, we had to fix that. We looked at sort of your permit discussion, your making process. A lot of zoning ordinances focus too much on height, setback, lot coverage use, but they don't address, is it easy to get something approved? If I want to apply for a plan development, is the process clear? Is it fair? Is it easy to understand? Do I know what is expected of me? And does the Planning Commission know what is expected of them as an applicant's perspective? So we took a really close look at your process to find out if it was clear in terms of its understanding. We looked at the inability to phase final approval for large developments as opposed to doing it all at once, sort of a lack of fair certainty for standards of review. Again, that's before you even apply, knowing what is expected. And that's for all parties, the city, Plan Commission, elected officials, the applicant, neighbors, doesn't matter. And then sort of like what we perceive as being an overly and unnecessarily prolonged approval process. We wanted to streamline it as well as make it more user-friendly. And then some other issues, a desire for no closed-door policies and a need to sort of diversify the local economy and allow a greater flexibility in what you allowed in terms of commercial and industrial uses. So some of the major changes, again, these are the 13 chapters of your new structure. This does not represent direct alignment with your current code. Like I said, part of one of our improvements was literally just the organization and structure of your ordinance as a referenceable and easily manageable document. So these are the 13 chapters of your new UDC structure right here. The bolded chapters that you see here, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, were the ones where the majority of changes were made. 10, were the ones where the majority of changes were made. We reviewed every chapter, but we didn't change things just for the sake of changing things. Canyon City is a pretty unique place and what works for Canyon City might not work in Pueblo, it might not work in Colorado Springs, might not work anywhere else, but it works for Canyon City. And so we didn't change everything for the sake of changing things. We didn't just grab something from someplace else. We had to make sure it worked for you. So some chapters you see that are not bolded, there weren't a lot of changes. We might have tweaked a couple of things, but nothing of substance. We had clear direction not to change the riverfront districts because those were relatively new and recently done, so we didn't change those. And then nonconformities vested rights and definitions, we didn't make a lot of changes too. We did tweak some of the definitions to coincide with some of the new language and some of the new uses that we've incorporated into the new code. But the chapters that are bolded are the ones that received most of the changes. So I'll go through some of these really quickly. So Chapter Two was Establishment of Districts. We created some new districts that you don't currently have, an NC, a Neighborhood Commercial District, and a BP, Business Park District. This is a direct result of making sure that it's alignment with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan calls out for things like business parks. You know, we talked a lot about research park or high tech parks or things like that. You didn't have a zoning district to accommodate that category of use, didn't have one. So we had to create one. We also talked about the idea of neighborhood commercial uses that were less intense, still commercial in nature, smaller scale, but could be adjacent to or embedded within the edge of residential districts and be fully compatible. You didn't have a district for that either. So we created an NC district and a BP district. We sort of clarified some of your existing districts, primarily your plan development process. You had two different plan developments, essentially with minor but very ambiguous differences. You have a PD, a Plan Development District, and a PDO, a Plan Development Overlay District. And we clarified the differentiating components of those two districts just to clarify and refine what you had. You had an existing TMU District, Transitional Mixed Use Overlay. We got rid of it. It's not used, not necessary. So that's a district we got rid of. And then for every district, the first thing we did is we wrote a purpose and intent statement. Too often what zoning mistakes are made is people get into the weeds, how tall, how far, setbacks, uses, but they don't ask the question, what are we trying to do in this neighborhood? What are we trying to do along this corridor? What kind of uses are we trying to accommodate in the business park? They don't ask the purpose, the intent of the district. So one of the first things we did is for each of the districts, we wrote a purpose and intent statement that aligns with the comprehensive plan. So when a development request comes forward, you will know if it does or does not comply or support the comprehensive plan designation and goals and objectives. And if it does, you have a direct zoning ordinance district that will apply to and align with the new comprehensive plan and land use designations. So some of the things we did, some basic district specific standards, we changed the Balkan dimensional standards to consolidate them all into tables, so it's much easier to reference. This is my property, this is my zoning district, what can I do? How tall can I build? What are my setbacks? How big of a lot do I have to have? We took a look at the dimensional standards, that's minimum lot size, minimum lot width, minimum lot area, things like that. And what we did is we ran a GIS analysis on all your existing neighborhoods. So we're not talking about some theoretical future development, we're talking about the neighborhoods that exist on the ground. The old, the new, small lot, large lot, doesn't matter. We ran a geographic analysis using GIS on all your existing properties to find out based on your existing ordinance, do the lots conform? And what we found is that, like in the R2 district, they did not. So like for the R2 district, your existing is 6,000 square foot minimum. While looking at it through GIS analysis, 6,000 square foot minimums, you had 409 lots, 25% of your inventory didn't comply. Well, that's a hardship on a homeowner because they have standards written for their sized lot and they don't have that sized lot. So there wasn't an alignment. Then we said, well, what if we change that to 5,500 square feet? Well, it dropped down to 300 nonconforming lots or about 19% nonconformity. If we lowered it to 5,000 square feet, we're down to 8% nonconforming. That's a solid number, it's single digit. And it doesn't affect anybody else. So we changed the lot area minimums from 6,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. Doesn't change any of the existing neighborhoods, except to make single family homes that currently exist now legally conforming, as opposed to having 25% of your housing stock legally nonconforming. So we did that and we looked at lot area, we looked at lot width. And the first thing we did is we tried to right-size your zoning standards per district with what you already have established on the ground. And that's very important. So we then took a look at permitted, conditional, and special uses. We consolidated all those uses into use tables. And then we used revised to eliminate redundancy, just to make sure it was more streamlined for modern uses. Chapter Five is Specific Use Standards. What I mean by that, the previous Chapter Four is District Specific Standards. What does the R2 district allow? What do the other districts allow? Use-specific standards are tied to the type of use regardless of the district. Accessory dwelling units, how do those function? Solar panels, mobile home parks, kennels, accessory dwelling units, community gardens, multifamily dwelling, solar energy collection systems. These are things that no matter where they exist, what district they exist in, they have to have standards for these specific uses. They're not district specific standards, they are use-specific standards. That's the difference. Chapter Four addresses everything by district. Chapter Five addresses everything by use, and these are unusual uses or, you know, not typical. Chapter Seven looks at development standards. Development standards, again, these are often called standards of general applicability. And what I mean by that is if I'm building a parking lot, I have to have standards for a parking lot. Doesn't matter what district I'm in, there are parking lot standards. If I want to have outdoor lighting, there are standards. If I want to have landscaping and screening, there are standards. Doesn't matter what district I'm in, there are standards by which I have to develop. And so Chapter Six is Development Standards. Look at bicycle parking and pedestrian circulation. We look at single family and two-family driveways, so you don't have 50-foot wide concrete slabs going out to the street. How wide should a driveway be at the curb? How long does that extend into the property? How can it widen out to go into a two or a three-car garage so that you're not making an excessive amount of impervious surface and you're not really impeding the traffic management along the roadway? Then we look at things like landscaping, outdoor lighting, dark sky gorgonces. This is a section, although we do it throughout, where we really use a lot of graphics. The regulations are depicted both in text, so you can read what the standard is, but then we also give you visual definitions and visual standards, so you can see both visually and in terms of text, what you can and cannot do. It's very clear, very intuitive, and very easy to understand. So what you see in front of you here are just a few different examples of driveways, aprons, vehicle storage areas, landscaping, perimeter parking lot landscaping, things like that. We also took a look at your sign standards. Some cities, the sign standards are in zoning, sometimes they're in a separate sign code chapter of the municipal code. First and foremost, we had to look at this because of a Supreme Court decision in 2016 called Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, or Reed v. Gilbert. And this was a court case in which they sued the town of Gilbert, Arizona, because they were regulating a commercial use signage differently than a church signage because of the content of the sign. And the Supreme Court said, can't do that. You cannot regulate signage based on content. You can say how big the sign can be, how many signs you can have, where the sign can go, and in a district, what type of signage you can have, but you can't say an automobile repair shop on a commercial zoning district, right next to a church in a commercial zoning district, have different standards because one says Pete's Automotive and the other one says Episcopalian Church Services Sunday Morning. You can't regulate the different size of sign or how many signs based on the content. So the first we had to do is go through and make sure your zoning or your sign code complied with the new Supreme Court standards from 2016. We looked at limiting the aggregate sign area that was established. That means you can have a window sign, you can have a wall sign, you can have a monument sign, but you can't max out all of those. On any given property, you can have all of those, but aggregated together, there was a limit on how much signage you can have. This is standard across the United States. We looked at permitting sign tables to make it easier to see what you could and couldn't do for your property. New sign types were established, single tenant and multi-tenant monument signs, polar pylon signs, onsite traffic directional signs, post signs, feather signs. These are all things that your code was silent on, but these were signs that existed and signs that we're beginning to see proposed and used more and more and more regularly. And your ordinance was silent on these. So we updated these to accommodate all these different types of signage. And again, we made it really clear to understand signage, where it can go and how it can be. And the incentives here is clearly to have better signage. Our goal is not to be overly restrictive and to be onerous and not let businesses have the signage they need to thrive and compete and draw people in. The idea was to make sure businesses had the signage they need, no matter what their use was or where they were located, but it was quality signage and it began to look better. So incrementally over time, the signage as an urban design component of Canyon City begins to be, sort of raise the bar a little bit aesthetically for the city. Plan Development Standards, I'll go through this pretty quickly. Again, you've got two. You've got a Plan Development District, a PD District, and then you have a PDO, a Plan Development Overlay District. And the PD, the major plan development, the PD District, is for sites that are 20 acres or more, where you really want to sort of expand a creative approach to development, not tied to the underlying zoning. All right? And then the PDO District is a Plan Development Overlay District. This is a plan development that isn't an underlying district, it's a plan development overlay, but it's overlaid whatever the underlying zoning is. And this is for creative processes for sites less than 20 acres. And what I mean by that, if I propose a PD District on a site of 40 acres, I'm not bound by the underlying zoning, like if it's, you know, R2. I can come in and propose a PD zoning and then we can start talking creatively of what will go on that 40-acre site. If I have a 15-acre site, I would have to use the PDO or Plan Development Overlay District in the R2 District. That means the underlying R2 zoning is in place. And the Plan Development District I propose is an overlay on top of that underlying district. So any relief or creativity I need, I have to justify or provide rationale as to why I'm deviating from the underlying zoning. So subtle differences, 20 acres made perfect sense. We looked at several properties in town and there is some administrative relief that Patrick can give as a zoning administrator to allow different sizes to be processed as a major plan development for properties less than 20 acres. So even within this, there is flexibility if someone can make a case to propose a PD on a site less than 20 acres. If Patrick reviews it and makes an interpretive understanding statement and decides that it can in fact be done on a site less than 20 acres, he then can administratively allow that to proceed through that procedure. Both of these procedures require a public hearing with the Planning Commission, so neighbors are notified, the property and public hearing are posted, and a public hearing is conducted. Slightly different in terms of the type of development procedure, but streamlined, way more efficient. One of the things we heard when we did our interviews at the beginning and held our zoning workshops was developers saying, yeah, nobody really understands the difference between these two, we got to clarify these a little bit more. So that's what this section does, Chapter Eight. Chapter Nine is Subdivision Standards. So we established what a minor subdivision was, again, fewer than five lots, consolidation of two or more lots. We looked at boundary line adjustments, corrections for errors and omissions. And we basically wanted to make sure that for subdivisions process, it was more streamlined, more straightforward, so people knew what they had to apply for and really sort of break it down to be a little bit easier and better process for a new subdivision. So that's this section for subdivision standards. And this is why this is a Unified Development Code, not a zoning ordinance. Traditionally, cities have a zoning ordinance and a subdivision ordinance. A UDO or UDC, which this is, combines the zoning and the subdivision into one code, which is what this does. Chapter 10 is Zoning Standards, and this looks at things like site plan review, conditional use permits, sign permits. These are sort of the different procedures, review and action steps that people can do and how they go about them, what the notice's requirements are, is it a zoning administrator, planning commission, city council, board of adjustment? This makes it very clear, the process you are required to undertake, the standards for those processes that you have to undertake, and what that is like at different points in the process, from application to public hearing to decision, to outcome of decision to appeals. We make this very clear. Throughout this, we really did a good job of making sure and prioritized, making sure we had Planning Commission and City Council feedback. This is why we met with you and the City Council at several times, working with staff throughout the process. Imagine going a year and then having an entire zoning ordinance in every section just dumped on you at the end. That's pretty overwhelming. So by breaking it down into pieces and working with you along the way, we were able to recalibrate and make adjustments and address things as we went through this process with you. And these are some of the things that happened as a direct result of that integration and listening to what the Planning Commission and City Council said as this was being drafted and considered, so we could make those changes along the way instead of now at the end. So standards for food trucks parked along Main Street between Second and Eighth was in here, maximum sign area for monument signs, gravel servicing materials for residential driveways. Most cities don't permit this, but this is part of your character. And even in new developments, you've got this. So we had to go back through and make this accommodation. Barbed wire in agricultural areas, a lot of codes now don't have them. We wanted to make sure, based on feedback that we did. We really looked at what was this overlay trigger, and this is what I mean by the Plan Development District Overlay Trigger, that said 20 acre. We had to do some research to figure out what would trigger a PDO versus a PD. We worked with you to figure that out over a couple of meetings. A temporary sign permit processing period was shortened. We allowed sign types listed and expanded and web-based public notice requirements instead of newspapers. So this is just some of the things that we changed because we heard it directly from you and the City Council members as we were developing this over the year, rather than making these changes at the end. These are already fully integrated. This is feedback directly from you and City Council. So again, I know that's a lot. I wanted to keep it fairly brief. For those of you that have gotten to know me over the year, you know, me keeping something brief is challenging unto itself, but this is a year's worth of effort and your new UDC, just sort of the high notes on how we got here and what it is. And with that, Patrick and Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
I think that's great. This is incredible feat you've taken on. Should we send it back to Patrick? Patrick, do you have any comments?
Well, I believe, I mean, John spoke for me because obviously I've been an integral part of this. I've had a number of long conversations with Jackie about this. We've had a number of conversations where we include Cat Sellers as the attorney reviewing this. And obviously, what we're presenting to you now is, for the most part, what will be going to council. Catherine is in the process of doing something of a deep scrub of this to look for inconsistencies, provisions that may conflict with one another, and we'll get those corrected before it goes to council. But by and large, I think what we have here is a huge improvement over what we've got now. Title 17, as it's written, reads like, and I'm sure Catherine isn't going to like me using this analogy, a committee of lawyers whose charge was to write a code that was as generic and banal as possible in order to make it fit as many jurisdictions as possible. So I like the fact that what we've got here is something that's a bit more bespoke for Canyon City. I think that's ultimately what we need.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay, any questions of staff? Yes, sir.
I've got three things that I just wanted to point out. I didn't go read through these 200-plus pages, but I did.
What?
We've already done that one time.
Yeah.
But I did go through and some of the items that I thought we were talking about. I took a look to see if some changes were made. And on page 105, where you're talking about the, in the CB, Central Business District with food carts, it's on, number C, it says restricted to three days per block. Wasn't that discussion, three days per block per week? Or wasn't there a specific time that we had talked about? Because that's pretty ambiguous, the way it's stated.
What page was that on?
Page 105. Page 105.
And it's paragraph P5C.
P5C, yes.
And I think you're right. I think that was three days per block per week or something like that.
Yeah, I think you're probably right, we can double-check that.
Yeah, because that's pretty, you know, confusing as it's stated right there.
Yeah, three days per block aren't, those units of measurement don't align without something else.
Yeah.
We need that per week in there or something.
Okay, that was the first thing that I had noticed. Then the second was on page 124 with the landscape. And this is something that I specifically had talked about in one of the meetings before, about the importance with landscaping. It can really add a lot to the development, but then if the landscaping isn't done right, it can take away a lot. And my suggestion at that time was to put together some sort of a planning types that would be available from the city, like if...
Yes, and we are working on that. That will be a separate document that we make available online. We'll be working with our Parks Department. I believe they've got a preliminary list, but we'll be expanding that. I would rather not have that show up in the code, because if we ever need to amend that document, it means we have to amend the code.
Okay, I just wanted to find out about that.
Yep.
And then...
We have not...
Go ahead, Patrick.
I was just saying, we have not forgotten that item.
Okay. One last item is on page 137, where underneath the specie G, species diversity requirements. It might be good to also identify what drought-tolerant native species are, to include that along with your other.
And we will...
Yeah, I think what I would do there is just challenge the Parks Department when you're working on that list to define that as well.
Yeah, when we put together this species diversity list, or the recommended tree planting and shrub planting, we can identify in there those species that are xeric and native-adapted in terms of average annual rainfall that they would get. Obviously, one of the things that we want, and again, this isn't written into the context, but what we want is when we do get landscape plans, we'd rather have them drawn by a landscape architect who knows what they're doing, knows how they should be properly planted for survivability, and knows how, you know, for irrigation purposes, to design a system that will keep them alive for the long term.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Any questions for John? Nope. So at this time, Patrick, are we just doing a motion to push this forward to city council for approval?
That is correct. We are asking for recommendations forward this to city council. Now, I should let you know, probably in July sometime, we're going to come back with a resolution for planning commission to repeal the contents of Appendix A to Title 16, since that's a planning commission exhibit, but that will be one of the steps necessary in getting the full land use code adopted.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I just need a motion and a second to approve the draft to move forward
I'll try it.
I'm sure it'll be fine.
I make a motion that planning commission approve this public hearing, this draft Unified Development Code, and push it to city council for approval. Is that all right?
That sounds good. Patrick?
That sounded fine to me. You did great, Randy.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Denise, will you please call roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Soether?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Did we lose Commissioner Moss?
I don't think so.
Oh. We're still okay, though, right? Yeah, we're still good. Okay. All right. Thank you guys very much for all that work.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
I would just thank the planning commission as well. I think you folks have done a standing job with all the meetings that we have had this year jointly with city council. I mean, zoning is not the most exciting thing to feed and talk about. It is conceptual and a lot boring, it's very detail-oriented, but the fact that we got your commitment to be a part of this is really, really...
All right. Thanks to all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, John. All right, any further items to discuss? Any announcements? Anything fun going on? No? Okay. Catherine, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.